My grandson, he has some issues, social issues. You know, he's a...
He's sharing.
And I want to be the man. And his mom said, "No, don't let him do that." You know, like the other day. He went outside and didn't have his shoes on. And his mom just thought the building was coming down. I said, "Hold up." Yes, well, if you let him outside without... I said, "I'm cool with my shoes." But see, that's the type of thing.
It's just different from... I mean, you're about in the end of the way. What else is there?
See, I like it, you know.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to our January 22 Newton County Board of Education meeting. If you would, guard your heads for a moment in silence place. Thank you. Are we stand for the pledge?
Our flag is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Like somebody ate a biscuit, did they?
Understand, we have some special recognition?
Yes, Mr. Turner, we do. Tonight, we have representatives from several of our schools who recently earned recognition from the state for their Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports Program, also known as PBIS. Overall, 12 Newton County School System schools earned recognition for their outstanding accomplishments with their continuing implementation of PBIS. PBIS is an evidence-based, data-driven framework proven to reduce disciplinary incidents, increase a school's sense of safety, improve school climate, and support improved academic outcomes for all students. Principals, when I call your school's name, please come forward to accept your certificate of recognition from Mr. Turner, our school board chair. First, I'd like to recognize Fairview Elementary School. Would Mr. I'm sorry, would Principal Dr. Artie Brunson and PBIS Coach Casey Ryder and any other Fairview PBIS team members come forward? The state has four recognition levels for PBIS schools, including installing, emerging, operational, and distinguished. We are proud to announce that Fairview Elementary School received the Distinguished PBIS School Recognition, the highest award possible... The highest award possible from the state for their PBIS program. It is also important to note that Fairview Elementary School is one of only 12 schools... I'm going to say that again. Fairview Elementary School is one of only 12 schools in the state to receive Distinguished PBIS School Recognition.
That's another applause.
Yes.[202.31][202.31](applause). In order to attain distinguished school status, schools must have participated in Georgia Department of Education training on all critical elements of Tier 1 PBIS, completed both Georgia Department of Education classroom training and Tier 2 readiness and training, actively installed Tier 1 PBIS critical elements for at least one full school year, conduct tiered Fidelity Inventory Progress Monitoring, or TFI, received a TFI 1 score of greater than or equal to 90%, and have office discipline referrals, in-school suspensions, and out-of-school suspensions decline since 2014-15. Congratulations to Fairview Elementary School and their PBIS team on a job very well done. We're very proud of you.[251.51][251.51](applause). Next, Newton County School System had four schools receive operational PBIS school status, just one step away from distinguished status. In order to obtain operational PBIS status, a school must have participated in Georgia Department of Education-approved training on critical elements of Tier 1 PBIS, must be actively installing Tier 1 PBIS critical elements for at least one full school year, conduct TFI Inventory Progress Monitoring, receive a TFI Tier 1 score or greater than or equal to 85%, and see declining office and discipline referrals, in-school suspensions, and out-of-school suspensions since 2014-15. Operational schools, when I name you, please come forward to accept your certificate. Clements Middle School. Clements is a 2018 operational PBIS school. Would Principal Fred Richards and PBIS Coach Tiffany Dean please come forward to accept your certificate? Congratulations to Clements Middle School for obtaining operational PBIS status. And Don Ward, congratulations.
And Miss Johnson.
Oh, I didn't even say him. The whole Clements... Welcome. Let's give them a round of applause.[341.53][341.53](applause). Liberty Middle School is also a 2018 operational PBIS school. Would Principal Kisa Vincent and PBIS Coach Courtney Randall please come forward to accept your school's certificate? Congratulations to Liberty Middle School for earning operational PBIS status.[365.12][365.12](laughing). Let's give them a round of applause. Livingston Elementary School is a 2018 operational PBIS school. Would Principal Dr. Patrick Carter and Assistant Principal Amber St. Clair please come forward to accept your certificate? Congratulations to Livingston Elementary School for earning operational PBIS school status.[401.03][401.03](laughing). Oh, my goodness.[403.28][403.28](laughing). Let's give Livingston a round of applause. Tearing it up around here, Dr. Carter. Porterdale Elementary School is a 2018 operational PBIS school as well. Would School Assistant Principal Sabrina Grant and PBIS Coach Tamika Clark please come forward to accept your school's certificate? Congratulations to Porterdale Elementary School for obtaining operational PBIS school Let's give them a round of applause.[451.12][451.12](applause). The Newton County School System had seven schools obtain emerging PBIS school status in 2018. In order to obtain emerging PBIS school status, schools must have participated in the Georgia Department of Education Critical Elements of Tier 1 PBIS Training, must be actively installing PBIS Tier 1 Critical Elements, must conduct a tiered Fidelity Inventory, or TFI, must receive a TFI Tier 1 score of greater than or equal to 70%, and office discipline referrals, in-school suspension, and out-of-school suspensions must be stable or declining since 2014-15. Emerging PBIS schools, when I name your school, will you please come forward to accept your certificate of recognition from Mr. Turner? Cousins Middle School. Cousins is a 2018 emerging PBIS school. Would PBIS Coach Michelle Bailey please come forward to accept your school's certificate? Congratulations to Cousins Middle School for being named a 2018 emerging PBIS school. Flint Hill Elementary School is a 2018 emerging PBIS school. Would School Assistant Principal Deanna Evans and PBIS Coach Elaine Owensby please come forward to accept your school's certificate? Congratulations to Flint Hill Elementary School for being named a 2018 emerging PBIS Congratulations. Let's give them a round of applause.[551.16][551.16](applause). Live Oak Elementary School is also a 2018 emerging PBIS school. Would Principal Erica Anderson please come forward to accept your school's certificate? She's on her way. Congratulations to Live Oak Elementary School for obtaining the 2018 emerging PBIS school Let's give them a round of applause.[580.54][580.54](applause). Middle Ridge Elementary School is a 2018 emerging PBIS school. Would School Assistant Principal and PBIS Coach Mr. Ron Edwards please come forward to accept your school's certificate? Congratulations to Middle Ridge Elementary School for earning emerging PBIS school status. Let's give them a round of applause.[607.54][607.54](applause). Newton High School is also a 2018 emerging PBIS school. Would School Principal Dr. Shannon Buff please come forward to accept your school's award? Dr. Buff's PBIS team members had planned to attend this evening, but they are all under the weather today and could not be here. And we don't want them here when they're not feeling well.
Ms. Cotton.
Oh, Ms. Cotton is here. There you go. Congratulations to Newton High School for earning the emerging PBIS school status. Thank you for being...[640.54][640.54](applause). Ms. Cotton. Veterans Memorial Middle School is a 2018 emerging PBIS school. Would Principal Dr. Tequila Curry, PBIS Coach Tiffany Hill, PBIS team members Mrs. Price, Mr. Hammonds, Ms. Ward, and Mr. Seymour, and Veterans Memorial Middle School student Ariel Webb, please come forward to accept your school's certificate? Congratulations to Veterans Memorial Middle School for obtaining 2018 emerging PBIS school status. Congratulations.[673.00][673.00](laughing).
You got the biggest smile.
Congratulations. Let's give them a round of applause.[684.82][684.82](applause). Finally, West Newton Elementary School is a 2018 emerging PBIS school. Would School PBIS Team Member and Teacher of the Year Stacy Rogers please come forward to accept your school's certificate? Congratulations to West Newton Elementary School for earning the 2018 emerging PBIS school Let's give them a round of applause.[714.12][714.12](applause). I'd also like to take this moment to recognize our district PBIS coordinators, Ms. Chris Williams... Where's Chris? Is she here? Is she not here? Okay. Well, we're going to recognize her. And Ms. Adrian Boysson for overseeing this very important program. We really appreciate the hard work, dedication, commitment, and support that you provide, your team provides to schools as they work to become distinguished PBIS schools. So, thank you very much for all that you do. Congratulations to all of our schools that received this recognition from the Georgia Department of Education. We are really, really proud of the work that you're doing as it relates to PBIS. So, thank you very much. Congratulations. Let me just give them another round of applause.[761.12][761.12](applause).
Again, thank you for all the hard work that you guys do. We really do appreciate it. We don't have any public participation?
No, sir, we do not.
Okay. At this part of our meeting, if you would like to leave, you're more than welcome to do it at this time, but you will miss the $50 gift certificate.[783.12][783.12](laughing).
Is that all the schools involved?
No, I think we brought on some new schools this year, so...
But we had some already in there.
I think so, yeah.
That includes everybody.
I think so, yeah.
You should have told. They don't see by the door. They all should have stayed.
Yeah.
Get on the phone. Call the manager. I didn't think about that. It's the holiday.
Mr. Berry, you want to see if they want to stay to hear about InterQuest?
Yeah, I forgot about that.
I mean, they're the middle schools, Darren.
Yeah, it's in the first part.
Yeah. I didn't even think about that. What can I do?
Middle and high schools.
Not good yet.
Their principals. Right, right.
Yeah, they're gone. They're already gone. That's all right. We're going to talk to them at their schools anyways.
Yeah, I didn't even think about that.
No. He's coming back in by himself. Like, no, sorry, we missed him. That's okay.
He's a stud.
They'll have a school-based presentation, so... Thank you for trying.[862.12][862.12](laughing). Thank you.
I need a motion to approve the agenda.
Sub move.
Motion by Ms. Baker. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Coggins. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same. Motion carries. Need a motion to approve the minutes placed.
Sub move.
Motion by Mr. Bailey. Second by Mr. Johnson. Any questions or concerns? Having none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same. Motion carries. Superintendent's report?
Yes, sir. Good evening.
Good evening.
In the superintendent's report, there are no changes to items A, B, and C, and we do have two presentations tonight, item D and E. Joining us for this evening for item D are Ashley Morat, Sean Prair, Lauren Casey, and Bentley, who is seated behind me on the ground, on the floor. Later, they're all from InterQuest Detection Canines of Georgia. And later this evening, you will be asked to approve a contract for canine detection services provided by InterQuest that would be effective during the remaining part of this school year. As you will hear, the dogs are trained to detect illegal drugs, medications, alcohol, and firearms. The dogs are friendly and non-threatening. Dr. Warfield, friendly and non-threatening.[953.12][953.12](laughing). This is a program that would complement the deterrent strategies already being used by the school system, such as our SROs, the CHAMP's program provided by the Sheriff's Office, and detection dogs utilized by the Sheriff's Office. Last week, we did meet with Sheriff Brown and Randy McGinley, the Chief Assistant District Attorney, and both were comfortable with the process that we are striving to undertake. In addition, all secondary principals want to use this service in their schools, have indicated a desire to use this service. The two primary benefits of the program are the increased frequency in which dogs will be present in school, and the education component that InterQuest provides that will serve to remind students about the importance of not being in possession of items prohibited at school. Following the presentation, the team here will be able to answer questions, and Mr. Berry is also here in case you have questions about discipline processes and procedures. And so with that, Mr. Morat, presentation is yours.
Thank you. Well, I think that was a great summary. I don't know that I needed to add. Thank you for having me, Board Superintendent, remaining people who are still in the room. My name is Ashley Morat, and I'm the owner of InterQuest Detection Canines. We are a company that is now nationwide. We've been operating for more than 30 years across the country, and the program is designed for substance abuse prevention. My goal is not to catch students. That's actually the last thing I want to do. I want to create an environment in schools where we educate them on what is going to be happening, and then we provide them with a friendly but reasonable deterrence that explains to them why these things should not be in school. Now, this substance abuse prevention program is about proactive deterrence, and the way that we establish proactive deterrence is through a couple of factors. The first thing that we do is we educate. We must explain to the students exactly what we're doing on property. If we just show up with a dog, they're going to think, "Big, mean, scary drug dog," right? They're thinking, "Police canine," and that's not at all what Mr. Bentley represents. We want them to understand exactly what we're doing, how we're doing it, what our people are going to show up looking like, which is what my people show up look like, right? We want them to understand that this is not something to be frightened of, that this is in fact something to help keep them safe. Now, with the philosophy of trying to improve this mindset with children, we start at the middle school level, and we do education at the middle school level. We also do a few inspections at the middle school level, and we also do education and lots of inspections at the high school level. The dogs, as he explained, are trained in four categories. So, when we all think of iPhone Plus, right, that means a little bit better, so think of him as drug dog plus, right? Drugs, so your marijuana, cocaine, methamphetamines, those types of illicit drugs. Second category is alcohol, so any type of beverage alcohol. That might mean beer, or whiskey, or wine coolers, or whatever it happens to be. Third category is gunpowder, so the dog can pick up on any type of firearm, any type of ammunition, as well as any type of fireworks. So, anything that's going to create a loud bang in the school, this dog can pick up on. Last but not least, medication. And for those of you who don't know, medication is the most highly abused substance in our schools today. Accessibility of medication in grandmother's medicine cabinet, or grandfather's medicine cabinet, or mom and dad's medicine cabinet is readily available, and frankly, students have great accessibility to it, and it's much easier to hide because they think the dogs can't find it. So, sorry, we're going to come in and let them know that the dogs can find it. So, we address all four categories. Secondly, we provide a dog that has never been trained to chase people, right? Our police canines on the streets, they are fabulous. They do a job, and we want them on the streets to do that job. However, if that dog has been trained to pursue and take down a criminal as a parent of middle school students, I don't want that dog in my child's school. That's my personal opinion as a parent. But as a person who's going to be working in your schools and bringing dogs into your schools, we design this dog so that, number one, he does detection, and, number two, his obedience is perfect, okay? So, we expect him to perform and behave better than the students do, all right? Detection is a game to him. It's really a game of hide-and-go-seek. When he finds his odor, he gets his toy. So, his level of interest in students is about this much, because the person carrying the toy is standing next to him, it's in his pocket, and that's all he's focused on, is finding that odor so he can get his toy. Again, it keeps the dog's focus on his work, not on what's going around the school. And I believe I forwarded you the... We have a company video, and in the video, literally, you watch the dog laying in the hallway, waiting for the class change to end, and there's thousands of children just passing by this dog, and he doesn't care. And so, that's exactly how we operate. We want the students to see us. We want to tell them who we are. We want them to see us in the hallways. We want that constant reinforcement to drive that deterrence. Now, we all grew up in the era of Nancy Reagan, right? Just say no to drugs. Now, it might surprise you, but none of your students know about that. And so, but what I like to look at this program is, the dog represents the reason to say no. Now, as much as we would like for every single student to have the gumption to be able to stand up to a bully and say, "No, I don't want that," or "No, I don't want to carry that," or "No, no," a lot of students can't do that yet, and we're asking a lot of our middle schoolers to do that. So, the dog becomes the reason. We provide them an option of saying, "You know what? With my luck, that dog's going to show up. I can't hold it because the dog's going to be here tomorrow," or whatever. So, we provide an option for those students to say no without having to dig down deep into the moral character and stand up to that person. Especially with the gun prevention, these dogs are an incredible deterrent to guns and ammunition coming into the school. Now, I always ask administrators, what is the weakest point in a security program in a school? And that is the parking lot. The parking lot is open to the public, it's accessible, and anything could be in that parking lot. And the only way to check for firearms in that parking lot is a dog that's trained on gunpowder. So, Bentley can not only help keep the students safe from contraband being in the school, but also save from the presence of firearms in the school. When we are in school, the school building is not in lockdown, all right? So, there's no interruption to the learning environment, and in today's day and age, we have to save lockdown for the moments when we really need lockdown. Our presence and Bentley's presence on school property is not a reason for lockdown. So, we like to operate in the open. We want students to see us, and we want it to be a collaborative approach with those students, with the SRO, and with the administration. This is not intended to be a gotcha. So, with friendly dogs, cross-trained in all the things that we don't want to have in our schools, we offer a safety improvement program, which, as Mike mentioned, we have worked with the sheriff and the DA's office, and we have talked through all policies and procedures, so they are comfortable with it. At this point, we have not received any feedback of concern. In school systems where we have done this in the past, we have actually not just seen a decrease in discipline incidences in regards to contraband in schools. My superintendents tell me that when we come in with the dogs, it's almost as if we take a wet blanket, and we just lay that on the school, and every bit of discipline calms down because the increased frequency truly does drive the deterrence. And we have seen this happen in multiple schools where the discipline incidences across the board have decreased. A couple other benefits that you all may not be aware of, as we operate in the schools, we become the agent of the school. So, the board hires us as an agent of the school. We fall under the same reasonable suspicion statutes that your administration takes, falls under. So, when we're able to operate in the school, we do the work. So, if your administrator might be standing there watching what's going on, observing and being that witness, but they're not actively engaged in the process of doing the inspection. That's what you pay us to do. That's what the dog is there for, and that's what my people are trained to do, is to do those inspections in a uniform, in an objective, and a very even process throughout, no matter whether the student is the class president or the class clown. Our procedures are that it will be followed the exact same way every single time. What questions do you all have for me at this point? Are there any particular subjects that I have not covered that you have asked me to touch on?
I don't think so.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
What's the breed of the dog?
Bentley is a black lab. We also have a Springer Spaniel. His name is Jerry, so he goes by Jerry Springer. We have another dog that is coming. I've told that it's a golden retriever, but I have not confirmed that yet. So, we've been... We're growing in size, and so those are our current dogs in the state of Georgia.
How long he's been on the payroll?
Today, obviously, far too long. Bentley has been working with us in Georgia for four years, and we have been operating the program in Georgia for more than 15.
With two dogs?
Yes, sir.
I have a question.
Sure.
Yes, ma'am.
So, my question is, the commonly abused medications that's on your site, and you mentioned medications. Can you tell me what medications it detects?
So...
Because it doesn't list anywhere.
Yes, ma'am. So, we specialize in training the dog specifically on caffeine and ephedrine. Of course, ephedrine is what methamphetamines are made out of. We also choose medications that are commonly abused in certain areas of the country. So, for instance, we might incorporate Ritalin into Bentley's training. We might incorporate OxyContin into his training. It's whatever is particularly an issue in that particular area of the country. Something in California may be completely different than what we have here. That being said, once we start to train the dog in medications, there are many common buffers throughout all medications, and so, once we train him on about the first couple rounds, he starts to pick up on everything. So, it's prescription, and it's over the counter. It really doesn't... It doesn't matter at the end. He will pick up on all pills.
Okay. Well, okay. So, I guess that leads me to my next question, because there are some medications that students do have a form where they can cure their own medication.
Absolutely.
But that's typically going to be in maybe like an Ibupen, or your Albuterol, or something like that. And so, he's not picking up on those things, is that correct?
So, Albuterol is a product that the dog will alert to. Now, that being said, you all have a discipline code that incorporates what a student is allowed to have and not allowed to have, right?
Those students who carry that have to have a form. My daughter carries hers, and it's a sign form.
Exactly. And so, I address that in the student assembly, and I tell the students, "If you have a medical emergency prescription medication that you're supposed to have on your person, then I want you to keep that item on your person, and I want you to keep that with you at all times. You do not change your emergency procedures because there's a dog here." However, if this dog... Let's say the student has accidentally left it in their locker, and the dog alerts on the locker. There's a couple of things we've realized. Number one, that's actually a medical problem that the student doesn't have their inhaler with them, right? And then, secondly, the dog's still going to learn it, but it doesn't mean that the student is in trouble. It just means that we need to deal with that, and we need to understand why that student doesn't have that emergency medication with them. And so, it opens up a conversation that sometimes maybe the nurse needs to have with that student, or, again, just because the dog alerts doesn't mean someone's in trouble. It means the dog has found his odor, and then through our inspection and through the discussion with the principal, that is then flushed out to determine what are the next steps.
So, the common practice for those students that have asthma, that are carrying their Albuterol inhalers on them, would be to tell... But it's an unannounced, you know...
Inspection.
Inspection. So, when would those students be alerted? I'm just a little confused now.
Right. So, no, we do not announce our inspections to anyone.
Okay.
And so, the principal doesn't know when we're coming. If, let's, for instance, let's say we came to a student's classroom, and a student had... You know, we've got 15 students in the classroom, and there's, you know, their book bags are laid out and whatever, and if a student has an inhaler in one of their bags, I'll ask them, "Hey, just go grab it and take it with you." And so, the students will go out in the hallway, and the dog will go into the classroom, and we can say, "Okay, yeah, there was an inhaler in the blue backpack right there." So, if Bentley happens to alert on it, he gets paid, right? But that doesn't necessarily mean that we need to go further. We always... If we cut the front door and the student has something that they need to share with us, we always encourage them to share with us proactively so we can address it then.
Okay. Those are common medications that a lot of students unfortunately have asthma and can't carry their inhaler. So, that's why I want to know what kind of medications...
Yes, ma'am.
...the canine was able to pick up on.
Unfortunately, we can't say you're going to be trained on these medications and not these medications. We can't really exclude that. But what we have found is that through our alerts that are medication-related, oftentimes we're flushing out other situations that might need to be identified and might provide other educational opportunities or other coaching opportunities for that student. or other coaching opportunities for that student. And, you know, it's, there have been days where we've opened up a vehicle, and there's twenty-five Coriceten cough and cold, and that's a commonly abused medication, and that student clearly has been doing something inappropriate with that medication. But there's other days where we open up and I find twenty-five vitamins on the door, and I'm like, "What's going on here?" And she's like, "My mom gives me a vitamin every day, and I don't take it, and I throw it in my car door." So, it's a vitamin. It's okay. Like, thanks. Let us check the car, move on, go back to class. Thanks so much. And it's no big deal.
How many school systems do you, you work with in, in, uh, Georgia, the state?
Hmm, twenty-five-ish, private and public.
One other question.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead. What involvement do we have with transportation, the buses, bus stops? Do we do any inspection there?
So, if we wanted to do an inspection of the buses at the bus depot, that would be an opportunity. So, we could take the dogs onto the buses on, and run the rows, not with students present. But there's an opportunity for, to have those buses checked if that's something that the school wants to have taken care of.
You wouldn't go to the bus stop?
It's not school property.
Okay.
So, we work on your school property.
Okay.
Now, what you could do is, once the school arrived, the bus arrived at that particular school, you could do a check there.
I mean-
Yeah, it's on school property.
So, I mean, we can always check a school bus.
Right.
We're not gonna check a school bus with students on it. We're gonna let all the students exit, and then we'll go check the school bus. But, you know, we're not finding that things get left behind that often on the school bus. It's usually utilized prior to boarding the school bus, and then it kind of takes effect on the school bus, and then you get off and you have somebody who's high. Okay. Any other questions?
I have one question. During your presentation, do you all normally stress to the students the consequences of having drugs on, at school?
Well, what I explain to the students when we're in the assembly is that if the dog finds his odor, then we will investigate it, and that we will provide anything that we find to the principal. And that the next steps will be a discussion with the principal about what discipline is necessary or not necessary. So, if it's an inhaler and it's no big deal, then that principal says, "Great. Thank you so much for your cooperation. Please go back to class." And if it is something that is worthy of a next step discussion, then that discussion then is had with the, with the principal. We do not engage in the discipline procedure because that's, we're, we're, our intention is to provide you with the evidence that you don't know is there. Not, um, we do not engage in the discipline procedure, but I think that question often comes up in the assembly. And when that is asked, I can turn to the principal and say, "Okay, well, you know, Principal Jones, can you answer that question for me? What are the gonna be the next steps if X, Y, and Z is found?" And most of the students have, are fairly familiar with the handbook, and they understand what the implications are. Whether it's found by Bentley or whether it's found by the assistant principal makes no difference. It's the same item. It's, you all already have those procedures in place.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, I appreciate your, your time and your interest on this tonight. I want to share with you all that, as I said, I have middle school students, and this program is near and dear to my heart because I know what kind of change it can make. As I said, I've been doing this for almost fifteen years. I have seen incredible changes happen in school systems, and we're very much looking forward to working with you all and working with all of your award-winning schools. So, thank you very much, and, um, we will, we'll be here afterwards if they might have some questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'm in.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The, the purpose of this presentation is to share with you a recruiting proposal for implementing an employee referral incentive program in the school system. Background: The recruiting season for NCSS begins in January and ends in April. During recruiting season, HR partners with school administrators and central office staff to participate in college recruitment fairs and regional job fairs. We also, as a school district, host a job fair for teachers. In the past, it's been in March. Actually, this year, it will be in February. And the purpose of that job fair is to attract teachers to NCSS, to speak with our school principals about openings as early as possible, and hopefully hire individuals before they are offered contracts with other school systems. About our recruitment events, we do have a variety of college fairs and university fairs that we attend. Um, we actually have our recruitment schedule posted on the website that indicates which school systems, which colleges we will be recruiting. And we include, like I said, HR staff as well as school principals to attend those visits. I also mentioned our teacher job fair. That will be February twenty-third at Newton High School. And then, at Griffin Reesaw will host a certified educator job fair, and that will be at the end of April, April twenty-ninth. And we will be there with other school systems in Griffin Reesaw, the other eight school systems. And we'll hopefully speak to certified educators throughout Georgia, as well as they bring individuals in from other states, and also speak with individuals who are eligible to teach but would be new to the teaching profession. Recruiting challenges: As you're probably aware, there is a nationwide teacher shortage, and that does impact our recruiting efforts. Some of the national trends show that there are thirty-five percent less students who are actually majoring in education. So, our colleges are producing less college graduates who can become teachers. And then, this school year, there were one hundred and fifty thousand teacher vacancies that were reported throughout the country. And so, that does make it difficult, which means that we are competing with metro school districts to attract and retain quality teachers. And due, due to the teacher shortage, our school administrators experience difficulty filling vacancies, and they're still usually hiring in June and July when there is a smaller applicant pool. Some of the recruiting goals that we hope to accomplish: We would like to attract a high-quality workforce and be competitive with metro school systems and surrounding districts. We want to hire qualified teachers and ensure that all students have an effective teacher in their classroom. We would like to ensure that we hire teachers who are invested in our school system and therefore will remain engaged and satisfied after they are hired with us. And then, finally, we'd like to create a culture in which all employees consider themselves a recruiter for the school system. So, what else can we do to recruit? We would like to create a larger recruiting force by engaging all employees in the school system with helping to recruit the very best teachers for our students. Thus, the proposal for an employee referral program. This is actually an initiative that is related to strategic goal area two, high-quality workforce underperformance objective one, which is to improve recruitment and to identify and hire high-quality staff. Benefits of employee referral programs: Research and studies from industries outside of education support the use of employee referral programs as an effective recruiting tool. And these are some of the benefits that they mention. That it is more effective than relying only on your job boards to find and hire applicants once you've posted those positions. That it is more cost-effective and can result in lower overall recruiting costs, and that it can improve the quality of hire and retention rates. This is a little bit about the proposal for an employee referral incentive program here in Newton County. We would like to encourage and recognize employee participation in our recruitment efforts by offering an incentive to, incentive to eligible employees who refer a fully credentialed certified classroom teacher. And this teacher would need to be hired for the two thousand nineteen, twenty school year between February fifteenth and July thirty-first. And each school year moving forward, we would have that same ti, window of time available for in, employees to be able to receive the incentive. Eligible employees will receive five hundred dollars for the first teacher that they refer and two hundred dollars thereafter for referring certified teachers who were hired and signed a contract with Newton County. The incentive will be payable to the eligible employee in their November paycheck. Are there any questions?
Go ahead, Ms. Baker.
Yes.
The dates that you had up there, February fifteenth or July, I missed it. I was trying to-
July thirty-first?
Yeah, because I didn't write paper. Why those dates? Because sometimes there's still vacancies outside of, prior to the start of school year. So, I, I mean, I just would think that anybody who recommends a highly certified teacher, especially if there's a vacancy after the school year have already started, they still should receive an incentive.
Well, what we were really trying to focus on is for those employees that they want to help us find and hire, that we need them here as early as possible. So, if they're referring someone in August and September, that's nice. But the goal is to get them on board to start the beginning of the school year. And so, we wanted to encourage employees to make sure that they refer these individuals prior to then. And of course, we're gonna hire them early. We're not gonna wait and sit on it if it's a good individual that we want, that we can hire.
Okay. Because my only concern is, if I'm that teacher and I want an incentive, and there was a vacancy at my school, like during October, during the middle of the fall, then I might say, "Well, I'll just tell my friend about it in February." Like, I'm just being honest. And so, you know, so I, I just-
I don't think like that.
Hopefully, that won't occur.
And you won't have as many anyway, so.
No, we do not expect to have as many. And we already have individuals that honestly refer employees all the time. This will be the first opportunity for them to receive a cash incentive. We, we do have referrals that occur.
And it's, and it's our program, so if, if by chance, after July thirty-first, if we need to have a conversation about amending it to carry it on, then, then I think we can, we can modify and massage the, the model.
That's what I want to hear.
Yeah, I, well, I think we can modify and massage the model, but I think, I think what we want to do is try to get it going first. Because we want to make sure that our processes on the payment side are really tight before we start extending beyond that. And then, we can always grow and strengthen.
Any other questions? Having none, I need a motion to accept.
I, I don't, what, this is a presentation. We aren't voting on anything, all right?
We just, I'm making a motion to accept items as presented. We're not voting to approve or-
I guess I'm asking, what, is there, is this a presentation for information purposes for us? Or are we gonna be asked to make a decision on any part of this referral program?
So, so tonight, we are, it's a presentation, and we're asking for your approval and blessing of the, of the model because the funding source will be presented in the budget for twenty, fiscal year twenty. The, there are no dollars expended out of this budget, so there's nothing to attach it to. But if you want to start the model, we, we just don't want to start it without having five board members, say, move forward with it, and then we'll approve those funds as we need to in the, in the fiscal year twenty budget. So, tonight, I'm asking for approval to move forward.
Okay. So, the follow-up question then, if I may. So, this is speaking to, in the strategic plan, the high-quality workforce that we're trying to attain. This speaks to recruitment. It will, there be another presentation speaking on how you're working on retention?
Yes.
Sure.
Okay.
We're working on-
From you, yes. We actually have, yeah, a company that's willing to come.
Yeah, we've got some data and some things that we're working on, that we've worked on with Upbeat. And Upbeat has done some one-on-one conferencing with principals, and we're doing, doing some really neat things, I think, in terms of retention. So, absolutely.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve, uh, items A through E as presented, please?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Coggins, second by Ms. Baker. Any further questions or concerns? Having none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same motion carries. We have no old business. We'll move to new business. Item A.
In item A, the superintendent recommends the approval of a contract for canine detection services from InterQuest Detection Canines located in Atlanta, Georgia. The effective date will be January twenty-third, two thousand eighteen, with an expiration date of May thirty-first, two thousand nineteen. Excuse me. That should be January twenty-third, two thousand nineteen through May thirty-first, two thousand nineteen. Rationale: The safety and security of students is a central focus of all school systems. Part of that process is providing learning environments free of alcohol, drugs, and firearms. Detection services are an important component of that goal and serve as a valuable deterrent. InterQuest Detection Canines of Georgia is a leader in the field of contraband detection and drug dog services. The contract will provide twenty-five and a half full-day visits focused on middle schools and high schools at a cost of eight hundred dollars per visit. Thus, the contract value is twenty thousand four hundred dollars. And this will be paid for with the approved FY nineteen amended budget from function twenty-six hundred to three hundred, aligned with strategic goal area three, culture, climate, and communication. That is item A, Mr. Chairman.
I need a motion to approve item A, please. A question. Need a motion. So, leave, motion by Mr. Bailey, second by Ms. Baker. Any questions or concerns, Mr. Johnson? Yeah, the schedule and who will prepare the schedule for these events?
The schedule has been prepared, and the schools don't have input. They're visited without knowing what the schedule is.
Somebody got to make the schedule.
The schedule has been made and presented to us, and Student Services is facilitating that process internally.
Would a board member be privy to that?
No.
Not to the schedule, not to the schedule, but we can-
Why not?
Afterwards, we can certainly let you know the dates that we're paying for, that the service has been provided and the payment has been made. But I think that information wants to be detailed, pretty tight.
Well, who got, I, I don't understand that I'm voting for something.
Yes, I think so.
We'll give you the, the, the dates.
Results. But that's what I've asked.
Yeah, yeah. But you won't know where, we don't know whether-
Are you asking, well, you know in advance the dates? Is that the question?
I'll discuss this later.
Okay.
I have a question. So, this is for January through May, or whenever, if this happens tomorrow, we'll start tomorrow, but through May. If, if this, if this works, so it works, we're gonna have some kind of quantifiable goal, right? I mean, we're gonna be looking at-
Yes.
What, what are we gonna measure? How many fines are made? Or are we gonna measure, like, how will we know it's successful?
We will look at the, we, we've already pulled data to look at what the number of referrals are in each of the categories. And then, the goal would be to, A, not have any more, to, to reduce that number through the education process first. And then, then having the dog there hopefully will help decline the, the, having the presence of those pieces on our campuses. So, we'll use discipline data, and then you will have the reports generated through InterQuest that will show us what it looked like for the remainder of the year.
Okay, so, again, the, the metric though is, the matrix that you'll use, you're gonna, you said-
Discipline data.
However many to none, but what's the goal? Like, there's a ten percent decrease, a fifty percent? I just, I'm just curious to know what's going to, how are we gonna measure effectiveness for twenty thousand dollars?
A significant reduction in-
Significant reduction, okay.
Yeah, I mean, significant.
That's ambiguous, though, like-
Because I don't know whether you really can, can put a number without knowing, you know, once you get the program in place, then you can kind of say, "Okay, we had, last year, we had-"
How many pounds?
Twenty-five. And then, the following year, it decreased to six. So, that means it's effective. So, right now, we're dealing with a number that we have no real idea how many fines will be found.
We have dogs now. We have some, we have some.
But what you can do, you can look at, you can look at the numbers that we've had thus far.
Right.
But you can, that can be an increase because the dog is present, and they're gonna find more.
Right.
You, may I?
Sure.
You can't look at the numbers that you have now because there is a significant less amount of searches that we had provided by dogs.
That's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying. You can't, right.
You can't compare. However, what you may have is that you may have discipline referrals go up this first six months because now you have more frequency on campus of somebody investigating or, or, you know, looking around for drugs and those items that don't belong. However, the ultimate goal at the end of that is that the students now will be alarmed that, "Oh, they're coming more frequent now." And so, and then you'll start seeing it grow down.
Okay, so-
But the first six months-
And then, another thing too, when I was, when I was trying to make is the fact that you may have had fifteen disciplines last year. But this year, with the dog present, you had less. So, it tells you that, "Oh, we don't have," I understand that, but I'm, which we don't know that. We're dealing with some unknowns because we never had a dog in this many times, right? So, you're dealing with some unknowns.
So, if I, if I may then, I, I believe what we're doing- So, if I, if I may then, I, I believe what we're doing then is we're going to invest twenty thousand four hundred dollars.
Yes.
To set some benchmarks.
Yes.
So then my follow-up question is where I was headed the whole way.
Yes.
What are we going to do next year? So, is it gonna still be at the rate of eight hundred dollars per visit, or are we gonna, are we just locking in until July, then we're stopped, we're gonna stop, we're gonna evaluate? But all we have is benchmark information, so how do we know if we're successful?
What, what, what I, what I would like to do first is let's get this up and rolling, and then we'll, um, talk about, um, the plan, the plan, the next step in the plan.
Okay. All right, I, well, I feel like then I'm.
This is the pilot.
Understand.
Yes.
There's a phase two, is what you're saying.
Yes.
Right, there's a phase two.
Yes.
All right, just, I'm looking to be accountable for the dollars we're spending, to somehow see that we're gonna see a mark in, and that there's a plan for that, and what I'm hearing is, we're really setting benchmarks, and once we get finished, we're gonna then decide what to do next. Well, if we've set benchmarks and then we're not gonna do the same thing next year, then we're obviously gonna, I will have approved finances.
We will be able to use the benchmarks that we've set this year going forward.
Okay.
So, um, yes.
All right, I've voiced my concern, I feel fine making affirmative votes, but I just wanted to make sure we're.
Right.
Following through.
Okay, uh, any other questions?
Oh, hey, Mike.
Having none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same, motion carries. Item B.
Mr. Chairman, items B through E, there are no changes, so those items could be taken together should the board so choose.
Need a motion to approve item B, please.
Same.
Motion by Ms. Coggins, do I have a second?
Is it just B?
B through.
B through E, if you would like to do that.
You'll do B through E? Okay, can I get a motion to approve item B through E, please?
Same.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Coggins, second by Ms. Baker, any discussions or concerns? Having none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same, motion carries. Next item, uh, F?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, after last week's work session, board members requested changes to the proposed meeting schedule, and you have been provided, uh, with a change schedule for you to review and vote on for this evening, unless you have any additional changes you'd like to make.
Okay, I need a motion to approve item F, please.
Same.
Motion by Ms. Baker, second by Mr. Johnson, any questions or concerns?
I just would like to say thank you for hearing us out on the dates, and I think this is gonna be a, a good solution.
Okay, thank you. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same, motion carries. Item G.
Was, do we skip, did we skip that?
Hmm.
F? F was boarding days. Oh. Um, I'm sorry, but I'm, just on my screen, it looks different, so. Do you have it different? It's organized differently from here? Okay, gotcha, so, it's just, on my screen, it's just different, that's all, okay. So, with item G?
G.
On the paper, item G. Um, I recommend that the Newton County, um, School System Board of Education members approve an increase in each board member's remuneration from six hundred dollars per month to twelve hundred dollars per month. Rationale, in an effort to ensure that future board members are adequately compensated for their time and effort related to school system business, the Newton County Board of Education members began to seek legislative support to increase their remuneration in December of two thousand sixteen. The Newton County Legislative Delegation created legislation that was approved in May of two thousand seventeen by the Secretary of State, allowing the Newton County Board of Education members to adjust their remuneration, adhering to the guidelines set forth in the legislation. The Newton County Board of Education members' remuneration has not changed in twenty-eight years. In nineteen ninety-one, legislation was drafted that increased the board remuneration from four hundred dollars a month to six hundred dollars a month, where it has remained for the last twenty-eight years, although the enrollment in the school system has more than doubled over that same period. With the increase that is recommended to, about, the increase that was instituted in nineteen ninety-one, each board member's remuneration increased from sixty cents per pupil to ninety cents per pupil. Today, however, board members receive the equivalent of thirty-six cents per student as compensation has stagnated and enrollment has drastically increased. The proposed change moves board remuni- remuneration to seventy-two cents per pupil, but remains eighteen cents less than the rate in nineteen ninety-one. The charts below illustrate the analysis of board remuneration over the years and expresses board compensation as a percentage of the total budget. So, um, just to, to review the charts, um, in nineteen ninety-one, prior to April, the enrollment, and this is an approximation of enrollment, it was around eight thousand students. In April of nineteen ninety-one, the enrollment remained at eight hundred dollars, but the legislation was instituted and the change was made to change board pay to, remuneration to six hundred dollars for an annual rate of seventy-two hundred dollars per board member, or a total of ninety cents per pupil. In two thousand nineteen, there are approximately twenty thousand students in our school system, and the board remuneration remains at six hundred dollars, which is a total of seventy-two hundred dollars a year, or thirty-six cents per student. In two thousand twenty, which is the proposed date for this adjustment, um, we predict, predict that there will remain approximately twenty thousand students, and the pay would amount to a total of fourteen thousand four hundred dollars per board member, or a per pupil expense of seventy-two cents, still eighteen cents less than what the board rate of pay was in nineteen ninety-one. So, as a percentage of the total budget, um, in nineteen, in two thousand nineteen, I look back at the current, at the budget in two thousand and one, and the, um, budget in two thousand and one was sixty-six million dollars. The thirty-six thousand dollar rate of pay for all board members was the equivalent of fifty-four hundred thousandths of one percent of the total budget. That was a hard one to, I had to go back and look at all those hundredths and thousands and make sure I said them correctly, but it, it equates to a very minuscule part of the total budget. The current, um, two thousand nineteen, looking at the current budget for a total, for board members, at thirty-six thousand dollars for all board members, um, compared to the two hundred million dollar budget that you now oversee, um, your rate of pay is equivalent to eighteen hundred thousandths of a percent. So, it's a, again, um, very, much less than one percent. And the proposed, um, adjustment for five members for, um, in two thousand twenty with a budget of estimated to be twenty, two hundred million dollars in two thousand twenty, um, at seventy-two thousand dollars, is still less than what it was in nineteen, um, in two thousand and one at thirty-six hundred thousandths of a percent, so far below one percent of the total budget. With that being said, this goal aligns to our strategic goal area four, organizational operational effectiveness, and lends itself to, um, supporting the quality of future board members who, um, involve themselves with wanting to be a member of the Newton County Board of Education.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Fury. I need a motion to approve item G, please. So move, motion by Mr. Johnson, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Coggins, any discussions or concerns?
I have a discussion.
Ms. Baker?
The only thing I have to discuss is that, I just wanna point out, and I know, Ms. Fury, you read it, but you still gonna have people in the public that skipped their whole entire line, this is actually something that we discussed back in two thousand seventeen.
Six, right, two thousand and sixteen.
We started in two thousand sixteen.
Yes.
It finally got approved in two thousand seventeen, however, we never acted upon it.
No.
And so, but people are gonna skip that whole entire line there, and so I just kinda wanted to reiterate that and point that out.
Yes, that, that is absolutely correct, we started the work.
People come in and talk about it.
Yes.
Everything.
We had, and we have followed the letter of the legislation that was drafted in May of two thousand seventeen, and you were unable to act, um, until, until that, until now. Um, with, with that being said, you are absolutely correct. Um, and it's also really important to point out, I think, that the budget in two thousand and one was sixty-six million dollars, and in two thousand and nineteen, it's two hundred million dollars. It's a significant change, um, that the funds that you have to oversee, and, I mean, that's part of your responsibility as board members, to oversee our budget. And twenty-eight years is a really long time to not address that, um, that change, and so, um, I think it's time for that, for the decision to be made, um, to move forward.
We have a motion, and we have a second, some discussion, so all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same, motion carries. Item H. We need, uh, to elect a two thousand nineteen board chair and vice chair.
I'd like to make a nomination, I'd like to make a motion to nominate as a slate, uh, Ms. Henderson Baker for chair and Ms. Coggan for vice chair.
I have a motion by Mr. Bailey, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Johnson, any questions or concerns? Having none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same, motion carries. Item J, we need to elect a legislative liaison. I'm sorry. Uh, item I, uh, we need to select a delegate and an alternate delegate for the GSBA Summer Conference.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to have Ms. Henderson Baker be the delegate for the GSBA Summer Conference, and Mr. Bailey be the alternate.
Okay, I have a motion from Ms. Coggins, who nominated Ms. Baker for the delegate and Mr. Bailey for the alternate. Any questions or concerns? Having none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same, motion carries. Item J.
I'll go ahead and make a motion. I'm a, I, I make a motion to nominate, um, Trey as the legislative liaison for two thousand nineteen.
Okay, and Ms. Baker has nominated, uh, Mr. Bailey as the legislative liaison, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Johnson, any discussion?
Yes, what, what do those words mean?
They just tricked you. Okay, we had a motion and a second and discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same, motion carries. Item K.
Good evening again, the superintendent recommends approval of personnel items as outlined in executive session.
I need a motion to approve item K, please.
Same.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Coggins, second by Mr. Bailey, any questions or concerns? Having none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same, motion carries. Other matters of interest, uh, Ms. Coggins?
Um, if we'd all keep Mansfield Elementary and Ms. White's family and our thoughts and prayers with her passing, um.
White gave.
Thank you. Um, with her passing, or her recent passing, so just thoughts and prayers for them.
Uh, Mr. Johnson? No comments, thank you. Mr. Bailey?
Nothing.
Ms. Baker?
Um, I just wanna say, yesterday, Project Weir put on an awesome event, they had, um, a lot of students and parents and other community members come out to their day on, not a day off, so, so very good for those students, so it's really good for organizations.
Thank you. Ms. Fury?
I'd just like to thank all of our school leaders for being here this evening, um, we appreciate your, your presence, um, at our meeting, and just thanks to our team.
Thank you. And I just have one thing to say, I want to thank each board member for the support that you've given me over the years as being a chair, I really appreciate your support, and I'm gonna return the favor to support you all in your endeavors. So, any other questions? Okay, having none, all in favor of, I need a motion to adjourn, please.
Same.
Motion by Ms. Coggins, second by Ms. Baker, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same, motion carries, stand adjourned.
Gavels heavy.
I thought before we approved, that the new chair get up.
I didn't do.